You have a couple of things.
I do, that's correct, but I'm turning to Mr. Dean to do the... those for us, so we'll do that.
Okay. Ready?
Yeah, I just have to get my purse undone and closed and put my body in this chair.
Okay, just tell me. I now call this Special Meeting amended public budget hearing. Today is Thursday, June 9th. Ms. Hall, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Frank.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Castro.
Here.
I'm here, I guess you're here, so we're all here.
Yes, thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Mr. Davis seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the agenda is approved. The board met in closed executive session from 4:05 PM to 5:55 PM to discuss limited personnel matters related to the evaluation of the superintendent as permitted under Section 10-15-1 H2 of the New Mexico Opens Meeting Act. No other matters were discussed and no action was taken. So this takes us on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon, officially evening, hallelujah. Wind's blowing, did you notice, by the way? So this evening, Madam President, we have two items that are coupled together. The first is a public budget hearing opportunity, and you know, while we have already conducted several opportunities for public input, we would afford the opportunity for the public to make any comments because many have either visited that online and/or attended our previous presentations. So, Madam President, it would be appropriate to ask for any public input at this time.
Is there any public input related to the budget as approved by the board on May 25th? Okay, there seems to be none.
Thank you, Madam President. So if I may, that moves us to item 2A2, adoption of the LCPS school year 2016-17 budget with modifications from the Public Education Department. So let me lay a foundation, I'm going to ask Mr. Dean to carry us through. Remember that budgets are a several-part process. You have already acted to approve a budget and submit it to Santa Fe, so you fulfill that responsibility. Santa Fe then reviews what you've sent them. They may make technical modifications, or if they see it appropriate, make other modifications, and then they send it back for you for concurrence and final approval of the budget. I've asked Mr. Dean this evening to provide the document that is in our system called OBMS, which is that state's system, and the information we have from the state. And, Madam President, after he completes that, I may have a recommendation on how you might proceed on this after we hear what Mr. Dean has to say.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Rounds, I feel like that I'm apologizing on behalf of Public Education Department.
You are.
The Public Education Department, when the budget is actually submitted to the Public Education Department, in previous years, they've been pretty responsive in looking at the information. Now, I would say that on the operational side and the capital outlay side, with the exception of SB 9, that they were as responsive as they usually are. Those budgets have gone through the initial review. So there's a multiple-step process. You have the initial review, then you have a final review, but it's not really the final review, but they have the final review, then they have the final approval step. Most of all the corrections and/or adjustments occur during that first initial review phase. Now, once the budget is submitted to Public Education Department, I'm, for the sake of this discussion, it's broken into two components. You've got state funds and capital outlay funds on the left hand. On the right-hand fund, you've, on the right-hand side, you've got all of the public educa... the federal programs, state grants, those. So on the left-hand side, where you have the operational funds, those are reviewed, all of those budgets are reviewed by the School Budget Planning and Analysis Group first. All of these funds have gone through that review. They have passed, there have been no changes to our 2016-17 budgets. Now, those are going to the Director of School Budget Planning and Analysis for his final review before it goes to approval. Now, on the other side of the House, where you have all the federal and state grants, that's where things get kind of boggled. And there's multiple layers for this, included in the executive summary, I've put a very poor summary of the steps, but on the federal grant side, once it comes, once the budget is received by PED, then they review it for the program side, then it goes to the flow-through side, then it goes to fiscal before it goes to final review. So there's a lot more dance in that occurs on the, you know, I think of it sometimes as the salmon's journey back upstream. There's a lot of obstacles that have to, that have to be jumped before it gets to approval. Right now, all of the federal funds and the state funds, state grants are in their approval loop. Where they're at in the approval loop, I cannot tell you at this time. Now, what I did do in your packets, you can see that I placed this document, it says "Public Education Department" in front. You can tell that it's a webpage. This is a snapshot that I took this morning, and I'm sorry to be so late in getting you this information, but I tried to wait as late as possible to give you the best information available. And as you can see, there's a few approved stamps next to a few grants, but that's it. Hopefully, within the next week or so, that all of the red Xs will be gone and we will have approved on all of these funds. So, for the lack of, it's not for the lack of trying, but I really have nothing new to tell you.
What are those angry red Xs next to you?
Those angry red Xs. Those angry red Xs mean that nothing has really been done on those yet. They have not been approved, but they're still there, they have not been denied either.
Okay.
I did include inside your packet, if you choose to read it, it's kind of boring accounting stuff, but they'll take away my CPA card if they heard me say accounting, boring accounting stuff, but I did include the analysis that we get from the Public Education Department. This is only for the operational fund.
Uh huh.
Okay, so it's their notes, there's no surprises in it, it's everything that we pretty much have talked about. I didn't think that there was anything to enlighten about their analysis on that. Also included in your packet that Tina printed out for you is, you will have the expenditure report and the revenue report. These are in the state's formats, so they're not very conducive to learning anything about the budget. The information that we handed out to you last time actually puts the budget in the format that we use to manage the budget, and that is much more telling as opposed to this information. It's the same information sorted differently. Madam President, that is all the time I can take on this, it's nothing special, and I stand for questions.
Okay, board members, do we have any questions on this, on these new pages from the PED?
Some of the things have an X and it looks like approval.
They just do that to confuse us, Mr. Frank's. I don't know why they do that, but yes, there are some of them that have an X and an approval. I do know what that means. What that means is the program side, now you will notice that this is on instructional and on instructional materials. What that means is, is program has reviewed the budget that's sent to them, and they've approved their side, but it's still waiting the next level of approval before it's changed to the big approval stamp.
Okay. Thank you.
So we hide and wait.
All right, anyone else? Any other comments? Well, thank you. I think this, that no further action is required from the board at this point?
Madam President, you know, that is a very interesting question. So recall in our last meeting, we talked about you needing to approve your final budget.
Right.
I'm going to recommend to you, and this is out of the ordinary, but I think it is a good protocol, is that I'm going to recommend to you that the board approve the final budget as presented, and then Mr. Dean, as the state approves the other parts, they will actually, between now and June 20th, issue us notice of that.
Okay.
And I think that will build the budget out. If it goes after July the 1st, they will have to have us all do it through a budget adjustment request, a BAR, and let that catch up that way. Our issue here is the state's out of cadence, and we're very clear with them about our intentions and our dates, so you can do the business of the board. And so I would recommend, although Terry, it may not be necessary because the state trumps us anyway, I think it might be good form for the board to show its intent by approving this as your final budget, since there are no changes. It's reconfirming an action you've already taken.
So I would just say the, without, there are no modifications, so we'll just, okay.
Madam President.
Yes, go ahead.
That's a two-edged sword.
You wanted me to include that.
That is a two-edged sword. If there are grants, and I, if Arlinda was here, she would, she would stand up and shout "Hallelujah." But there are grants that we do not have awarded yet, that the public education may not, I'm going to use the term, slip those in until right before June 30th. So my recommendation would be, and Mr. Rounds and I have not discussed this.
Go ahead, I think I know where you're going.
My recommendation would be, is if we do approval tonight, then probably, and I won't let them add anything that is not necessary to conduct business as of July 1, but if there's items that need to be added to conduct business as of July 1, I want to be able to give them the green light, and then I will bring those changes back for ratification. Those will only be some of the small state and federal grants. The big grants are there. Title I, Title II, Idea B, they're already there. It's some of the smaller ones that may impact summer programs.
So, Madam President, can I kind of trudge into the potential motion verbiage for you? So I'm going to recommend that the board approve the budget as presented and future adjustments as made by the state of New Mexico to complete the budget. And then, in that motion, it is the board's intent to ratify, in your August meeting, the actions of the state. I think that gets you there, because my concern is that you get the budget, the June 20th requirement of your action completed. To Terry's point, they'll make adjustments up until then, and then those that fall off that, the bad news is, the state will keep doing it, and then they'll BAR it in later. This covers you and allows you to get to the intentions, I think, that Mr. Dean just presented.
So then, the budget as presented?
As, well, as, which is really ratification before you already did. And adjustments that would be made by the state.
Okay.
As appropriate to your budget.
I think I can go ahead.
Does that make sense, Madam President? I'm just trying to help you work.
Yes, we might as well cover all bases and not worry about any changes later on.
Madam President, Mr. Rounds, one point that I do want to make is, if we, in our original budget submission, there are some times that we will put grants into the budget that we know that we're going to have, but if PED does not get, I'm going to be quite frank, if the PED does not get on the ball and get that approved, if they haven't approved it as of June 30th, it goes away.
That's correct.
So we've got to go in and strip it out of our system at that point, and then, even though we submitted it because they didn't get it approved, it falls off of our budget. So that is a possibility.
And that will be followed up with bars in the future.
At that point, it's going to be stripped out of our budget by Public Education Department, and when we do go to add that back into the budget, we will then have to do a bar that comes to the board for approval.
Is this usual and customary?
Yes, but this year's kind of messy.
Okay.
It's not, Madam President, it's not usually this far off.
No. We have a new director in School Budget Planning Unit, and this is his first year to go through this process, and he's learning lots.
Yep, he's learning as he goes.
So then, I will go ahead, if there is no further discussion or questions, I will entertain a motion to adopt the LCPS school year 2016-17 budget with the modifications as presented and to include any adjustments, and it is the board's intent to ratify, well, no.
Madam President, you might just want to go.
With the modifications as presented from the Public Education Department.
Correct, yes. I think that might be where you want to stop.
Okay, that's where I need to go. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Or do you want me to say again?
I would like you to say it again, please.
Okay, I will say it again. I saw that face and I knew that's what you wanted. I will entertain a motion to adopt the LCPS I will entertain a motion to adopt the LCPS School Year 2016-17 Budget with the modifications as presented from the Public Education Department.
So moved.
Second.
Are you comfortable with that? Any other questions or comments, discussion?
Madam President, could I recommend you do a roll call on this?
Okay. Ms. Hall?
Mr. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And I vote yes. So, and then we will be waiting to see if there are adjustments or changes in the future.
Yes, ma'am.
And we will then ratify as they come to us.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so then that takes us now to, we can click the page to Old Business, and it takes us to Action on the Superintendent's Evaluation. And Mr. Rounds, you had a comment?
Madam President, I have a recommendation for this. Madam President, I'm going to recommend that the board act to temporarily table the superintendent's evaluation process as we complete discussions that we are in regarding that at this time.
Okay. So we will go ahead and I will entertain a motion to table the evaluation process.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
And we should probably do a roll call on this as well.
Madam President, that'd probably be appropriate, yes.
Mr. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And I vote yes, so that passes. We will table the evaluation process. Okay? That takes us now to remove from the table ACA, JBA, Title IX, Gender Equity and Recision of Policies, Number 480, Equal Educational Opportunities, and Number 268 Federal Grievance. So I will entertain a motion to remove these old policies. Do I have a motion? Okay, Ms. Hall moves.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that we have now tabled, removed from the table, I'm sorry, these policies. And that will take us into the first reading of the revised policy ACA, JBA, Title IX, Gender Equity and Recision of Policies 480, Equal Educational Opportunity, and Number 268 Federal Grievance. So we have it in front of us, and Ms. Galván, did you want to tell, show us the changes
Madam President.
Yes.
How come the policy identification doesn't seem to correspond? In the agenda, it's ACA slash JBA, but the one in front of me is JB slash?
I don't have it, hang on.
GBAA.
Okay.
I'll be explaining that if I could.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and Superintendent Rounds. Let's begin with the title. Thank you, Mr. Frank. The other policy that you had, I think you might have a copy of the original, was ACA. It's totally my fault, I realize, we already have an ACA policy, so I realized I needed to recode it. So what I have done is selected JB, which references the student section of our policies because Title IX obviously oversees all of our kids. And then a slash of, an identical policy would be the GBAA, which allows your adult component to be included. So it's a change of the coding, but the content is exactly the same as what we discussed last time.
And I just read the script, I didn't even look at the policy, so.
Oh, okay. So that's the reason for the change in the code. There have been a couple of changes after we discussed it briefly with Mr. Frank and Ms. Flodas and I during a meeting recently. On your purpose section, I've changed the JB-GBAA reference throughout the policy. And under background B, I've added in, do you see this on your screens, or do you have the?
We have a copy.
Copy, okay, thank you. Sorry. I added in, the statement is about that you're also committing to nondiscrimination policies that you already have in place, and I realized I had left off the JICKA, which is your student harassment based on protected characteristics. So I just added that because you have another nondiscrimination policy there. The other change then is on Page 2. It's under the section that says Sexual Harassment Policy under Title IX. The board members recommended that we added the words "coach" and "trainer" because, you know, it just gives more opportunity for people to realize it belongs to all of these people that you have to refrain from prohibiting, you have to prohibit sexual harassment. So we added in the words "coach" and "trainer." And other than that, there are no other changes. I think we're continuing to get additional information on background, on why this policy was drafted from the Cuddy firm, and Ms. Gallegos is still, I think, doing a review of that. I'm not sure you want to still go forward with any other discussion until she has a time to look over that. I sent her another update this afternoon from Mr. Sanchez, which kind of gave a good synopsis of sort of why we got to this place in generating a Title IX policy. But Madam President, that's your purview on where we want to go from here.
Okay, and?
Madam President, could I make a comment on that?
Yes, okay.
So, you know, over the recent time, there's been a lot more focus on bullying, as an example. And so this process started about nine years ago. It appears that some of the earlier work may have not included some of the specific process language that is now enjoyed in this final draft. So one of the things the board may wish to ask is for counsel, once we go through this, to align all of the parts. Because often what happens is when a student files or a parent files on bullying, they go across the entire spectrum of these areas, and I think you might want alignment so the processes are identical, you don't have any, I think that's something that you might ask counsel to assist you with.
Yes. Yes, I think that's, thank you for bringing that up, and we will ask counsel to sweep the other policies, in particular race, gender, and disabilities, and then, so that they are similar and they are more realigned, because we have differences in grievance policy, and so we need to make them all line up properly. Okay? So I will ask, I am asking legal counsel to do so, and then we will take this to a potential second reading. I don't know how long, or if we will be ready for a second reading for next time, and then possibly pass it by August. Okay? Does anyone have any questions on this, on the, on Title IX policy? Okay. If you have any input, and is it being put out for?
Yes, I'll repost it, if you've taken it off the table, repost it to the web.
Yes, okay, so that we can have public comment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galván. Okay, this takes us now to public input. Before we move into public input, and I haven't received any forms, but I guess I'll open it up anyway. Move to public input, I would like to remind everyone that it is the board's practice not to respond or take action on any statements made during the public input. So does anyone have anything they'd like to say?
I'm off, please.
Okay, Ms. Simpson?
About the budget, so I miss my budget opportunity. It is just reiterating some of the concerns that we continue to have about the budget process, namely that we are reviewing the expenditure report that was posted. This was, I know there has been changes from this, this was posted May 17th, but we continue to see very high increases in expenditures. So proposing spending, increasing spending $7.7 million more, but with fewer staff. So concerns that an estimated, an inflated estimate of expenditures is deceptive in that it leads to the perception that we are in a budget crisis. We have $1.5 million set aside for emergency reserve, which is the equivalent of 23 teaching positions. I think that is very high. When we remove teaching positions, that increases class sizes and reduces our student opportunities for electives and all kinds of different programs. So we continue to be concerned about the ramifications of the, this budget process, this budget and this budget process. So we urge the school board to continue to pay very close attention to the expenditures on a monthly basis and ensure that, and of course, this is already the job of the Finance Committee, so there is a process in place to do that, but the increase in expenditures, we believe, will have a negative effect on the experience of our students at LCPS. I see that the direct instruction by the PED's calculation is decreasing from 64.1% to 62.%, while support, while other services like central services and many other services are increasing. So I guess we request too that the board carefully review vacancy savings, that those vacancy savings not be utilized as an indirect way to increase cash balance, and that we continue to review all monthly unfilled positions and work to make sure that those positions that are funded, that aren't counted in this reduction, actually get funded, so.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say? Okay, well, I think that takes us to the end of our meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.